Can I get a motion, please, that the agenda for the November second, twenty twenty one regular meeting of council be adopted as presented? Councillor Byer will make that motion. Any questions, comments, or concerns? Seeing none, all those in favor. Motion carried. Can I get a motion, please? That the minutes, sorry, I lost my spot here, that the minutes of the October twenty sixth, twenty twenty one organizational meeting of council be adopted as presented? Councillor Bevan will make that motion. Any questions, comments, or concerns? Seeing none, all those in favor. Motion carried. Can I get a motion, please, that the minutes of the October twenty sixth, twenty twenty one regular meeting of council be adopted as presented? Councillor Sharnar will make that motion. Any questions, comments, or concerns? Seeing none, all those in favor. Motion carried. And we have no public hearings, no delegations, reading of bylaws. Can I get a motion, please, that council give first reading to bylaw number two, two, six, seven? Councillor Taylor will make that motion, and we will hand things over to CEO Beverage.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We do have Ms. Florizone on the screen to be able to introduce this item.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. I am Carrie Florizone, and I have a quick presentation for B O A two, two, six, seven. Just going to share my screen. A land use by law amendment application was received on October twelfth, and the request was to add several industrial uses to the M one A light industrial serviced land use district. The request was to add several permitted uses. Several of these already exist in other districts, such as outside storage of industrial materials, heavy trucks and equipment. And truck depot, truck depot is not currently defined, so we are proposing to add a definition that truck depot means a use for industrial vehicles and heavy trucks are stored and dispatched. This use does not include accessory sales or rental uses, storage or dispensing of motor fuel or petroleum products, or the storage of materials on the site. However, it may include an accessory office building for administration of these. We're also proposing adding discretionary uses of industrial vehicle construction equipment, sales, or material services establishment. And light industrial building such as shop or garage for equipment, storage, and light servicing work. There are eighty-one parcels in the M one A district that would be affected by these added uses. There are no other financial resourcing or staff impacts at this time. We did look at the land use bylaws of comparable municipalities and are going to be sending out correspondence to M one A designated parcels, as well as the neighbors to the specific site that's looking for a development permit for comment both on the bylaws and the proposed development permit. The recommendation is that council give first reading to bylaw two, two, six, seven, instead of public hearing for December seventh during the regularly scheduled council meeting. Thanks.
Yes, this way, I do have our new G M of infrastructure planning on day two, joining us to actually add some supplemental information for council's consideration as well.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through, so I guess one thing that I'd like to share is it's through agreeing this obviously on day two and working with staff, one of the things that Chad about considered was potentially an alternate option that council may want to consider, and that being a site-specific regulated direct control district. Typically, when you see a use that's new to the community, it may not be fully understood. A direct control district is a great way to test that through a site-specific regulated direct control. So I think that's a good option in this case that we might want to consider. So it's just for some council considers an alternate. Certainly, this option is still available to council should we want to receive down this path, but providing that's another option.
All right. Thank you for that information. My understanding is we would need to continue to pass first reading tonight in order to move this forward.
Sure.
All right. Thank you. I will open the floor to questions from council. Councillor Sharnar.
Just for the public viewing, what areas is all this, like you're saying, the east end? So I'm thinking go east or west of Edson. There's a lot of light truck use all over Edson. And I'm kind of shocked that there's no light truck storage. And so I'm allowed to ask more than one question. I've got a few highlights in here.
Ask a question.
Okay, the other one, too, is where you're saying, like, the dispensing of fuel and oil and stuff. In the trucking industry, a lot of people are buying it in bulk. So will there be a restriction? And the other one that really brings to light most trucking companies during a fuel shortage will bring in temporary tanks, like a ten thousand, twenty thousand liter tank to temporarily put in their yard. So I'm wondering if that'll be left an option? And if you could just highlight the areas for the people viewing, where exactly we're talking about.
Through the mayor, to Councillor Sharnard. The map of the M one A district, I can pull that back up for you. And with regards to the bulk fuel, bulk fuel, I believe, storage and sales is what the listed use is, and it is a permitted use in the district currently. And so if there was, let's say, a truck depot that also wanted bulk fuel on site, they would just apply for a development permit with both those uses listed. And so on this map, all of the kind of pink fuchsia colored parcels would be affected by this amendment. Those are all the M one A designated parcels.
Thank you. Thank you. Councillor Byer.
Thanks, uh, to the chair, to our new G M. So if we were to consider the alternates that you mentioned by just putting it to a land use district, is that, sorry, direct control? Then do, is that something that we would do tonight, or we would proceed further past the public hearing? And then make an adjustment at that time if we felt it was reasonable to?
Mr. Mayor, so I think the best course of action, if council wants to consider that, that option now, we probably want to get some sort of direction to council tonight to proceed with that. And then we kind of have to work on timing in terms of breaking that, the bylaw for the first reading of that particular option. Keeping this current one in process for the applicant.
Thank you. Go for CEO Beverage.
Miss Mayor, through the council, so we have prepared an additional motion for council's consideration as well that does address having the alternative option. So we will, when we're ready, we'll follow the questions. We will pull that up on the screen so you're able to review.
Thank you. Councillor Taylor.
So my, so through the mayor to administration. So my understanding is, as the motion is, we stand by, as we stand it. If we pass this bylaw, it would affect all parcels of land, not just the one that the business owner is looking at changing. Or wants for his specific use, for their specific use.
Ms. Florizone.
Through the mayor. That is correct. The applicant has made an application to amend the district. Administration is in support of bylaw twenty-two sixty-seven, as these uses are listed in other industrial districts already in town. And they make sense with the purpose and intent of the M one A district to allow flexibility, not only for the parcel that is awaiting a development permit decision, but other parcels that that landowner also owns, as well as some that his colleagues and neighbors own, that they'd be interested in similar uses as well.
Thank you. Councillor Moore.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, through to the administration. Does this include a proviso for a truck repair on site?
Ms. Florizone. I think the council is asking about a repair shop or repairing trucks on site.
Sorry about that, through, through the mayor. I didn't quite catch the word repair there. Yes, so the uses that are being proposed to be added to the district would allow for some repair on site. Yes.
You, anybody else have any further questions or comments? Councillor Position.
I I think this is the, the right, the wording is good. We do need some amendments to this, this district. I do know what effect the landowner has put this forward. They currently have option to lease their property, and our current bylaws will allow logging outfit to, to lease the property. So they are the ones who put this forward. I'm definitely speaking in favor of this. I do like the, the options that are also there present, but I don't, we should stall this for the interest of the landlord. They are under a time crunch and have been attempting this since May, so.
Great. Thank you. Councillor Bevan.
Yeah, I'm in the same as a country position there, and that, that, you know, we proceed with this. We don't, we don't stall anybody here. And that's it's nice to have these companies that want to come into town, set up in our industrial areas, so we could fill them up and give another tax base out of it, stuff like that. So I think, you know, we proceed with this as is, and then I see you have beverage said that, that they will be bringing more information to us at a further date, and we can move on with that.
Thank you. Right, if there's no other further questions, I will call the question for first reading of bylaw number two, two, six, seven. All those in favor? Motion carried. This next motion that we're going to have is going to be a little bit different from what you see in your package, and I'll have administration speak to that once we get that on the table. So the motion is, council set a public hearing, or sorry, that the public hearing be scheduled for a later date to be determined by administration. I'll move that. Right, thank you, Councillor Position, and CEO Beverage, if you want to hand that over. Or speak to it?
Certainly. Um, Mr. Mayor, through to council. So there isn't a requirement for council to set a public hearing date. By allowing for a little bit of flexibility, we might be able to expedite this particular public hearing. But in future, likely will not see typically the dates, in essence, or this coming forward. We would, that's an administrative process, and we're happy to, to take that on.
Thank you. Any questions, concerns with that? I will call the question. All those in favor? Motion carried. And then we're going to have another motion that we will put on the floor, and I think we'll put it up on the screen here, so we are clear. Can I get a motion, please, that council direct administration bring forward an alternative proposal to bylaw number two, two, six, seven, including site-specific direct control district? If the parcel legally described as parcel lot three, block four, plan zero, six, two, zero, eight, zero, eight. Councillor Bevan will make that motion. And CEO Beverage, she wants to speak to this.
Um, Miss Mayor, I'm going to, you know, in essence, this option, as we discussed, the direct control. You know, there's unique situations in which it may be fitting in order for a direct control to be introduced. And we feel that in this particular situation, we'd like to explore this option in order to allow for more flexibility and to allow for council to work with this item. So I'm not sure if Mr. Kittles has anything further to add.
Thank you very much. Any questions, comments, or concerns? I didn't speak on the, the last item, but I would have to agree with one of the comments here. It's surprising to me that a truck depot was not included in this district before. And I think that you know, we should always be trying to find solutions in order to encourage economic development to our community, and I think it's unfortunate that, you know, we have to go through this process right now, but hopefully we can get this fixed when we go through our land use bylaw rewrite, which we'll be getting underway here shortly. But in the interim, I think this would be the best solution in this particular case. So I will be supporting this. If there's no other further questions or comments, I will call the question. All those in favor? Motion carried. Moving on to the next one. Can I get a motion, please, that council get first reading to bylaw number two, two, six, nine? Councillor Taylor will make that motion, and I see we have Ms. Florizone with us as well. So Ms. Florizone, take it away.
Fantastic. Quick review of bylaw two, two, six, nine stemming from the same developer-initiated land use by law amendment received on October twelfth, twenty twenty one. The request is to add a residential use to M one A light industrial service district. The application was split into two bylaws for council's consideration, so that we can administratively work with the district and the industrial uses that, as several councillors have said, make, make a lot of sense for the district, that planning supports. And then to deal with staff accommodation that's also being proposed in a separate bylaw for maybe more particular consideration. So the proposal in the bylaw is to add a definition for staff accommodation, which means a dwelling or dwelling units for the temporary accommodation of employees working on a site. And to add staff accommodation as a discretionary use to the M one A light industrial service district. Again, there are eighty-one parcels, sound M one A, that this bylaw would affect. The municipal development plan requires that residential development, other than approved surveillance suites, shall not be permitted in an industrial district. And so should council approve bylaw twenty-two sixty-nine, an amendment to the municipal development plan would be recommended for consistency in the planning document hierarchy. There are some concerns from planning about having staff accommodation in an industrial area, such as the proximity to railways, highways, large industrial facilities, and the wastewater treatment plant for the specific site that is awaiting development permit. There are no other financial resourcing or staff impacts at this time. Again, we consulted several bylaws in comparable communities and are proposing to send out correspondence to affected parcels in the M one A district, as well as adjacent parcels regarding both the land use by law amendments, as well as the development permit application that is pending. The recommendation is that council give first reading to bylaw twenty-two sixty-nine and set a public hearing on December seventh. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Florizone. Ms. Florizone, do you have anything else you'd like to add to this?
Um, Miss Mayor, and through the council, I think that the same applies to this item, as the past item, with regards to the recommendation to amend the, to have the public hearing scheduled a later date determined by administration, as well as to direct administration to bring forward an alternate proposal to bylaw twenty-two sixty-nine with regards to the site-specific direct control district.
Thank you. Council, if you have any questions, comments, or concerns? Councillor Warren.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, through to administration. Can surveillance suites also be used as security? For security people to watch over the sites?
You ahead, administration.
Mr. Mayor, through to council more. That's typically the use of surveillance suites. And also, most definitely, that's what they'll have on the sites in order to reduce theft.
Thank you. Ms. Florizone, has something you want to add?
Uh, through the mayor. It's actually a requirement in our definition for surveillance suites, that the purpose of that suite be to surveil the site and provide security.
All right, thank you. Councillor Sharnar.
Hi, yes, I'm looking over this bylaw, and I'm looking what the developers want, but during our very busy, or right now, can we not have set up the accommodations and even not with the restrictions, because with, right now, in Edson, there's no places to rent. And like, not to be permanently, but we should be reviewing temporarily, like, they got a restriction of fifteen people. There's camps that set up on our outer perimeter of Edson, they have, and they will set up. So in that area, looking at it, you're not close to any where people sleep. It's totally an industrial, and we should be moving something forward to have certain restrictions like any other camps. And maybe set it up on a twelve months or twenty-four months, so it's not permanent, but allow them to bring as many people to a restriction. So fifteen, okay, I'm bringing in, I need twenty or, or thirty. And I believe we'd be helping them to accommodate, because right now you cannot rent anywhere. Hotels are full, motels are full, there's no place to rent. So we'd be doing ourselves a favor encouraging, because even some of our empty lots, and even on the West End, where we might have got a temporary renter in that would have cleared the land, put in accommodations, and you know, put in some kind of storage. So it's something that we should look at. Are we allowed to put in a temporary accommodations with certain restrictions in place?
Thank you, Councillor Sharnar. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I think that's a, that's a really great point, Councillor Sharnar. Obviously, I, I just looked here, and I, you know, it was a challenge to find, find combinations here. So certainly, that's an issue that the council needs to be aware of, consider. I guess what I would caution council against is being careful about how we implement that, we could consider that. So I think you're right, that a temporary type situation is a great idea, and I think what we're suggesting is through this option, maybe for a direct control district, we can build that into that district. The specific regulations, and perhaps, you know, temporary arrangements to, to test that, to find out if, you know, in fact, that type of use can work in that area, and what the impacts may or may not be on the community. Maybe they're positive, I don't know, maybe they're not. But it gives council and the community a chance to, to test that in terms of why that's something we want to implement further in the future. So it needs to be.
All right, thank you, Ms. Florizone.
That's through the mayor to Councillor Sharnard. I believe if I'm understanding you correctly, there, there is certainly some challenges with temporary accommodation in town. As the bylaw currently stands, the, there is no limitations on the number of people under staff accommodation, or the number of structures. There actually are no regulations that council's setting in the bylaw, except adding it to the district and defining it. The specifics for each parcel, because it's discretionary, would come down to the discretion of the Development Authority for context and conditions on a permit. So with, with that in mind, there, there certainly could be temporary. They certainly could have regulations around it if you would prefer investigating that as an option, creating a specific set of regulations around that use. That's also something that we could accommodate.
Thank you, Councillor Byer.
Thanks. Uh, to the chair, to administration, two questions. First one is, if this proceeded and the landowner then rented out or had some of the lodging on site for a few people, and a few years went by, and then they find out that there's all sorts of issues they're having because of the proximity to railway and highway and large industrial facilities, or the wastewater treatment plant in the town. Would they bear any liability for allowing that to happen, or would that be solely on the owner of the property, or the individual that chose to, to reside there?
All right. Thank you very much, Ms. Florizone.
Uh, through the mayor, to Councillor Byer. In instances like that, particularly the wastewater treatment plant, there is a requirement that we not issue a development permit until we have a waiver for that setback distance under the subdivision and development regulations. So without that waiver from the province, it's a nonstarter. There are also mechanisms that we would likely put in place in the development permit as conditions to mitigate some of the risks and nuisances of those non-compatible uses, again, should council decide to move forward in this manner.
Thank you. Any other further questions or comments? Councillor Taylor.
So through the mayor to administration, the way I understand this is that the business owner essentially just wants someone to park his trucks, where he can have his truck driver stay for a night or two, and then proceed on the next morning, essentially arriving at night, leaving the next morning. Is that the way I understand what the business owner or developers requesting?
Ms. Florizone.
Uh, through the mayor. In discussions with the applicant, there is a site that there is a development permit pending on bylaws twenty-two sixty-seven and twenty-two sixty-nine. The ask is to be able to park logging trucks, some ancillary materials to build a shop and have twenty people accommodated on site overnight. That is for that specific site. In discussions with the applicant, he also, again, owns several other parcels in town that are M one A designated, and is seeking some flexibility on those parcels potentially in the future as well.
Thank you, Councillor Position.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Speaking to it a bit, it is there, right now, they are the, I can tell them, the local business people that, that propose, or the potential tenant is currently driving trucks all the way back to Drake Valley every single night, because they can't get a hotel room in Edson. So those are potential dollars that leave our community, because they want to be able to put them in. They're not talking cooking facility, they're talking camp shacks. Those people stay in our community, they'll drive into town and buy their breakfasts, they'll get their dinners, they'll get their food. And right now, they're spending thousands, one thousand dollars driving heavy trucks back and forth through Drake Valley. And so that, that's the proposed that they want, and they want to run a logging outfit out of there, they, and equipment and stuff. And then when they talk about buildings, it's like the temporary structure that's there as well, and they put up a structure that they can shed snow off of stuff to do repairs.
Thank you. Any other further questions or comments? Uh, I'll just speak to this. We are in a unique situation right now with inability to find places to rent, to purchase. You know, talking to local realtors, we basically have no inventory available, and our hotels are, are packed, and I hope that as we go through our land use re-rate, we do have some flexibility to deal with these shorter-term situations. I don't think we're going to be in this situation for more than maybe a couple of years. Unfortunately, we can't just snap our fingers and build accommodations. So we need to have some flexibility within our community in order to ensure that we can continue to drive economic activity. So I do like the option of a direct control district. I don't see any issues with having this type of facility on that particular side of town, or on the outer edges of the West End. Maybe a little bit more troublesome within some of the other areas in M one A, but that would be on a parcel-by-parcel basis. So I certainly want to see this moving forward and hopefully have these drivers in our community supporting our local businesses and supporting economic development in our region. With that, I will call the question. All those in favor? Motion carried. Can I get a motion that a public hearing be scheduled for a later date to be determined by administration? Nice move. By Councillor Position, I think we've talked about this, everybody understands. So I will call the question. All those in favor? Motion carried. And then the supplementary motion that council direct administration bring forward an alternative proposal to bylaw number two, two, six, nine, including a site-specific direct control district for the parcel legally described as parcel lot three, block four, plan zero, six, two, zero, eight, zero, eight. Councillor Sharnar will make that motion. Any questions, comments, or concerns? Seeing none, all those in favor? Motion carried. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Florizone. Uh, can I get a motion, please, that the twenty twenty-one capital budget be amended by allocating one hundred thousand dollars in the Vision Park Phase One Capital Reserve to the Vision Park Phase One Capital Project for project design, including site and tender preparation? Councillor Byer will make that motion, and I see we have our other brand-new general manager with us, Protective and Community Services, Protective Services, Mr. Bob Beck, who is familiar to the region. Welcome, Bob.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, Mr. Mayor, this is a motion. This is a project that previous council understood quite well, and probably everyone in the room understands the redevelopment of Vision, Vision Park. And previous council had approved the redevelopment plan, including both phases in September, and also understood the flow of funds that would make this project happen. Unfortunately, at that time, we didn't get a motion to proceed with amending the twenty twenty-one budget to allow capital funds for the Phase One. You know, it seemed like council wasn't aware we were proceeding. So we're asking for council to pass that motion. It'll allow us to legally proceed with the design and tendering of Phase One.
Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Beck. And I see we do have our Parks Manager, Guy Latour, with us as well. Do you have anything supplemental I'll add, Mr. Latour?
Um, just the information that's already in the
Just the information that's already in the request for decision. This is to. Do the work on phase one. That includes the three diamonds for the hardball and the three diamonds for softball. And the one premium level softball diamond on the location that the diamonds were moved from Trans Mountain. I just have a, a quick. Picture to share and I lost my picture again. Disregarded. My apologies. When I closed my browser, it disappeared. I'll just bring that up real quick, if that's okay, just for the new counselors have. Are able to see what. Phase one is of the rebuild of Trans Mountain. Are you able to, I will share that now? So this is the rebuild of phase one with all the removed diamonds that were affected by the Trans Mountain. And what phase one will rebuild. And then the majority of the construction will occur next year. And we're just doing all the tendering and specifications. And site prep for that at this moment. So that's the, the, the main information.
Thank you, Mr. Latour. We will open the floor to questions. I'll just comment that phase one is paid for by Trans Mountain. Through agreement with them to. Repair the site after they. Did their construction through there. So council, any questions? Councilor Shinar.
Through the mayor to guy. I was questioning and the difficulty of tendering this project. I was approached by businesses and they said the way it's set up, there's so many different ways of tendering. Are we notifying these local businesses that could be bidding on this and helping them with the tendering procedure?
Um, so the procedure required to follow on a project of this size is to. Provide a tender package and it has to be posted on the Alberta purchasing connection. And it's a very strict process that we have to follow. All, we will have a pre-tender meeting where anybody can come. And ask questions and we'll be able to provide information to all people. And potential bidders for that. Package, but at a, at a two million dollar. Tender plus, we have strict rules that we have to follow for the tendering process.
Just to follow up, I do understand the strict rules, but what my comment, comment is, I mean. Are we notifying the local businesses and making them aware? We're not helping them tender, but we're. You know, calling them up and saying, because you always hear cry out, I didn't know about it, didn't get a chance. You know, they need to follow the meetings, but it, and I'm glad that you have the pre-tender meeting because a lot of them, the confusion is. There's so many different tendering places out there to tender. So if we can invite the local. You know, this is dirt work and stuff. So we can get the people that move dirt there's around us and maybe. Send them email or phone call, seeing they're aware of it to encourage the businesses, meaning local, they could be in the county or town but around us. Just to encourage them to help them find the information.
Go ahead, Mr. Beck.
Happy to run some local advertising to make sure that there's a paper indicating that there's a current tenure on this project.
Perfect, thank you.
Yep. So through the chair to council, as councillor, GM Bob Beck has just indicated. We do do post in the paper and we put it on our website. And then what we tend to do is with local groups and businesses. Is we send them the links to the Alberta purchasing website to direct them through that process.
Thank you, Mr. Latour, Councilor Danner.
Chair. Actually, Mr. Latour kind of mentioned it to you. And I'm just looking at what business we have in town. There's a lot of business in the town and the county. I don't know how much time it would take if we were to. Go to everyone, make a call or whatever and that. It would take a lot of your guys' time to do it. So I think, you know, if you send it out. Has the links and stuff like that. People know what's going on in town here and that. It will take a lot of time. You could have one hundred and fifty contractors in town. Where that it just a lot of time here and that. So I think, you know, they. Most of them know where to go to the website to find it and everything else. And if you're coming new in the town. They know where to go to because they've been on these packages and other towns, communities or whatever and that. So it is actually nothing new. I'd like to see somewhere more business people. Been on these, but a lot of times they don't have the manpower, equipment to do a scope like this here and that. So. I think we're doing the right.
Councilor Byer.
Thanks. Through the chair to council. The West Hillhead Community Futures also tries to put on workshops to introduce businesses about RFPs and how to complete them and. The process for the standard requirements and bidding process. So that would be something I would. Suggest for any businesses that are questioning that. They did have one scheduled for this Thursday, November fourth. I don't know if that's still proceeding or not, but it's via Zoom. So there, there is some help out there if someone does require some guidance. And I'm also in favor of proceeding with the phase one. Thank you.
Councilor Positioning. The mayor through administration. Our current business licensing system does if collect emails. CEO beverage, your favorite topic.
Mr. Mayor, through the council, I'm not sure. I'd have to look into.
Councilor Shinar. Mine was close to his, but what we could do on the business license, we could simply ask the question. Would you like to be notified? Because I know like the company I worked for, we spread across Canada and the US. And if you make them state and click on a link, you will be notified for more stuff they want to. But when the people are getting business license. We could correct, we could collect the email and ask them when something's coming up, we'd like to be notified that it's one click of a button. That spans out to business license people that check yes.
Ms. Forzal, did you have your hand up?
Yes, I did actually. On the question of do we collect email addresses on our business licenses? And so through the chair, we do collect emails on our business license application forms. But I believe we're currently still working on. Managing that information and putting it into a more useful database so that we can. Utilize it for economic development initiatives such as what's being discussed.
General Manager Kittler.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So one other thing I would. I recognize the, the, the will to notify everybody, but the risk with that is, is that you miss somebody. So when we take on the accountability to notify all the contractors. If we make a mistake and miss one, now we're in trouble. So I think the more generic approach. Is much safer for you to transfer the accountability to contractors to do their work to, to find, find a tender. So. It's just a risk. If you miss somebody, now we've got a problem.
All right. Thank you, Councilor Taylor.
Through the mayor to council administration, I agree, GM. That at some point, the business owner needs to take some ownership as well in terms of. Looking for the appropriate tenders and, and I think the method that we have been using is sufficient again. I think it's up to business owners to, to take some accountability or some responsibility to, to look into that themselves. All the information is available through our council meetings, through ads in the paper, so it's all up there. I do have a question in terms of. The, the site itself. Is this being used as an opportunity to enhance the facility as well? Or just repair the damage that's been done with Trans Mountain?
Through the chair to council, this will substantially increase what was there before. These will be all brand new diamonds with new fencing, new fields. We'll have the premier diamond. This significantly enhances what was there before.
Thank you, CEO beverage.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just to note with regards to Alberta purchasing connection, when they do sign up for it, they do actually get notification and alerts. So they have that built in within that system.
Thank you, CEO beverage. And as somebody that has to provide. Hooks to the town events and I do get notifications as well. So it's actually quite a, quite a neat system. Any other questions, comments, or concerns? Seeing that, I'll call the question. All those in favor? Can I get a motion, please, that council set our reserve bid for the property scheduled for tax sale on November sixteenth, twenty-twenty-one, as listed in Schedule A attached? Councilor Bevan will make that motion. And we have our general manager of corporate services, Sarah Bittner, with us. Go ahead, Sarah.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We're not quite as new as the others. So before you say, there's a request for decision for reserve bids for the tax option. But I thought I would take this opportunity as we only go through this once a year and there are some new councilors. Just to do a quick run through of the tax recovery process and how we got to the place that we are today. So taxes are deemed for the entire year, even no matter when you send them. Now, we send them out in May, June, June thirtieth, but they are for that calendar year. So tax areas are defined as anything not paid after December thirty-first of that year. So when you're going through the tax recovery process, every March thirty-first. Municipalities must, and that's from the municipal government act, taxation is a very heavily legislated part of the. The G eight, we just municipal government act, that we must prepare a listing of. Parcels of land that are two years in arrears and mobile homes that are one year in arrears. And send these to land titles and registries respectively. And then they get a lien put on the title. Or notification put on the registry for those properties. August first of that year. Notice is sent to the owners of those properties. And they are notified that they have until March thirty-first of the following year to pay those arrears. Anyone else that might have any interest on that property is also notified at that time as well. So what that means for the ones we're looking at today is that we're dealing with arrears for parcels of land from two thousand and eighteen. And arrears from parcel of mobile homes, sorry, from two thousand and nineteen. So it's quite a lengthy process. So if those arrears aren't paid by March thirty-first of that following year. Then we can offer them for sale to. Deem out and raise of taxes on those properties. And we have until that next March thirty-first to have the sale. We're having ours in November. We set that date at a meeting a few months ago. There's advertising regulatory. That we have to meet, etc. So we set the date. In a while before. And they have right up until the eleventh hour of the auction date to come in and pay. Any arrears. They can come in right before and pay them and then the sale will get canceled. There is also an opportunity for people in arrears to enter into a tax agreement. The longest that can be is three years. And we look at their current arrears, we look at, we estimate coming taxes, penalties that might apply. And then we give them a thirty-six month equal payment plan to try and get up to, to speed on that. So that's just a quick, very quick rundown on tax recovery process and how we got to where we are today. So what we also must do. Is council must set the reserve bids for any of the properties scheduled. At this time, we have one property outstanding as listed in your request for decision. Our CISA has notified us that the, the fair market value at this time is a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So we're here to request that council set that reserve bid for that property for our tax sale, which is scheduled for November sixteenth.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Bittner. Do we have a map showing the location of this property? No, yeah. Tried to look it up on the website.
It is a residential property along fourth and.
So the one in Bree?
Just the cross.
Yeah, I'm trying to figure out.
So. If I'm, yeah, sure. So we have here on the cursor is forty-seventh street, forty eighth street here.
Thank you very much. All right. Any questions, comments, or concerns? Councilor Moore?
Mr. Mayor, through to administration, how much land is that in total, like hectares?
Sorry, through the mayor to council, sorry, I didn't quite understand.
What's the size of the lot?
Through the mayor to council, I'm sorry, I don't get that information. Listen, I can certainly find it out for you there.
Seven thousand square feet. Just a single laundry.
Yeah. Yeah. Any other questions, comments, or concerns? Seeing none, I will call the question. All those in favor? Motion carry. Thank you, Ms. Bittner. We have no information items, no sundry items. Council committee reports, we're going back to October twenty-seventh. And Councilor Positioning, we'll start with you.
I have nothing to report.
All right. Thank you, Councilor Taylor.
October twenty-seventh, I attended an holiday orientation. For council, it was informative, lovely. The clientele that I associated with were also.
I think Councilor Positioning was there as well. Orientation.
Yeah. Yeah, excellent.
Okay. Counselor Shinar.
Is that the one I was there for half the meeting? Okay, then I was there for half. I did a Zoom meeting on October twenty-ninth with Trans Canada. Our biggest drive right now is we need memberships. Memberships are down. Some of it is due to the struggle. So we're going to concentrate on the big areas that we want to bring Edmonton back on Saskatoon, different areas. So. I'm tasked with being the Alberta rep to help spearhead the Edmonton one. We brought examples and. One of the long members goes, oh, by the way, did you ever get the traffic lights? And I said, yes, the council helped me get them. And we are going to mention is the other set of lights. I'm going to bring that motion forward to Bobby to get the second set by A and W. There was reports on different highways, which most of the time probably most people won't. Matter, but we did fill some vacancies from Jasper. We're still looking for one more Alberta one. The resolutions. Are next meeting will be November twenty-sixth. That's it for my report.
Councilor Bennett. Only one, twenty-seventh, the orientation. All right. Thank you, Councilor Moore.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I attended the Edson District Historical Society meeting on October twenty-eighth, virtually. But a lot of interesting things came out of there. There's a light, a lighting retrofit, retrofit going on, fluoresces to LEDs. Cost of nineteen thousand dollars. It will result in savings of eighteen hundred dollars a year. Most importantly, it will reduce greenhouse gases, which is super important right now. And placed by twenty-twenty-three, that should be. And Community Revitalization Fund, Western Canada Diversification. In tandem with Payback Kuriant in seven to eight years. So partnering with the town as well at twenty-five to seventy-five percent basis. Or seventy-five to twenty-five, wherever you prefer, whatever sounds better. Will apply, they will apply, does the historical society for an energy wage subsidy. Provide, this will provide one-track lighting for the displays in the museum. And total installation will be nineteen hundred and seventy dollars. Most importantly, the, this would be good for the displays and it would be, look good for the museum and sound good because it would include. Motion sensors and audio for displays. And. It would also tell the story of the Galloway Station Museum, which is quite a story in itself. Screens and, and sound would cost estimated three thousand seven hundred and ninety-nine dollars and ninety cents. Also, the caboose that stands in Centennial Park, a lot of people may be asking themselves, what's the history of this caboose? Well. They're going to address that, estimated cost of fifteen hundred dollars. It will have a plaque explaining above the caboose, little history of it. And there's a two thousand twenty-two display budget, which is eleven thousand six hundred dollars. And that's, can't give you any more information on that, but that's what the total is. December eleventh is the date for the Edson District Historical Society Christmas party. Again, I don't know if that's virtual or whether it's it's going to be in person, but I will eventually find that out.
Thank you. Thank you. Councillor Byer.
Thanks. I just had the one event on October twenty-seventh. I attended the council orientation, and thanks to the staff, mainly Steve, for setting me up on Zoom, as my children were sick that morning, so I appreciated being able to participate and really enjoyed hearing what everybody heard while we were out campaigning, so lots of different thoughts and ideas from the public.
All right, thank you. On October twenty-seventh, I had the orientation as well. Councillor Moore, and I believe councillor Taylor forgot to mention youth council yesterday that we attended. Was was great to see our new youth councillors. Staff Sergeant provided an update on RCMP crime stats, which council received a copy of, and engaged with the youth to see what their priorities were. Youth stated that they would like the RCMP to continue to focus on theft, that they really enjoy seeing the officers in the schools outside of calls for service. One comment was made that some some of the RCMP officers are involved in one of the churches here in town, and it's really a positive community policing initiative that they really enjoy. They also talked about homelessness, chatted about skateboard park safety, and discussed the global municipal order turnout, and I mean, potential ideas on how to get more people to come out on boats, and including possible incentives to encourage people to vote, which, you know how that has worked with some other government policies. And that was it. They will be involved in hopefully getting our Santa Claus parade folk together as well and assisting with that on September third. I believe that's going to be going forward with the Chamber of Commerce, so that is my report. We have no financial items, questions from media and public regarding items from this council meeting. I believe Adrian said she doesn't have any. Unless Mr. Capus has any questions. Mr. Capus, do you have any questions? I see none. With that, we will take a motion to move into a closed meeting session. Councillor Byer will make that motion. All those in favor? Motion carried.
I'm going to make a motion for a German.
All right, thank you, and councillor Positiony will make a motion for a German.
I'm a German.
Thank you. All those in favor? I'm a Polish.